...strings, and I will tell you, having met Bob Baker years ago, this man has left a true legacy behind.
You guys ready for a puppet show?
Yeah!
Today at the Madrid Theater, run by the Department of Cultural Affairs, we're doing two shows. Bob Baker was a puppeteer. Back when Bob Baker was six years old, this is all the way back in 1930, he saw his first puppet show, and then spent the rest of his life creating the Bob Baker Marinette Theater. Puppets have been around since ancient Egypt, if not before. The magic that existed 50 years ago, 2,000 years ago, still exists today.
I've been to other puppet shows, but never like this.
My favorite part of the show were the ostriches.
I just really appreciate that we were able to come today and that this is provided by the city. It's a really nice service to the community.
We do shows all year long and all throughout Los Angeles. We have a traveling company that comes out just like this, and we're popping up everywhere. All that information is at bobbakermarinettetheater.com. Puppets are for children of all ages, so from two to two plus. Bob used to say, "Be happy, be healthy, and always keep a smile on your face."
Becoming a firefighter is a rigorous process of skill and strength training. Not just anyone can become one. Now imagine how awesome a dog you would have to be to pass all that grueling training. Reporter Saido Pagan has the opportunity to meet one of these very special canines.
Good girl, good girl, easy, easy.
This is Veia and her owner and handler, LA firefighter Margaret Stewart. On this day, they are training for their important and critical job. Veia is one of only two dogs at the Los Angeles Fire Department certified to recover human remains. Veia is deployed about 12 times a year. She's there after a fire, a disaster, and at crime scenes.
She locates human blood, bone, or tissue, which could mean a body that fell victim in a structure fire, it could be in a disaster with a mud flow, it could be any type of scenario.
Veia is well-suited for her job on the human remains detection team. She is widely known for her intelligence, high energy, and hard work.
It doesn't matter what's around her, she's just gonna plow through, up, over, around, to get to what she needs to do to get her toy.
Canine Veia's skills are in demand all over Southern California. Firefighters say her ability to find remains helps to bring closure to grieving families.
In 2016, she's responsible for locating four individuals. It was a family that perished in a structure fire, and no one knew they were there.
Veia's recovery work has earned her accolades from the Los Angeles Fire Department. A few years ago, she and two other dogs became the first non-humans to receive a valor award from the LAFD.
She's established a reputation that she, we work hard, we're reliable, and we train regularly to maintain that. Show me, show me, search!
Firefighter Stewart credits the love and the bond that exists between them for making it all work.
We go everywhere together. She comes to work with me, she's at the station, we go on vacation together, we travel to workshops across the country together, so we're a package deal.
How adorable is she? Oh my gosh, I would love to take her home. Veia is one of several specially-trained dogs used by the LA Fire Department. And next week, we'll meet one of her coworkers, a canine who is part of the arson counterterrorism section. The Golden Dragon Parade turns 121, wow! Local chefs compete to make savory dishes with chocolate, and Wisdom Immersive Art Park opens a new exhibit featuring Samskara. All this and more in Things to Do.
The Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles presents the 121st Annual Golden Dragon Parade. With thousands lining the parade route each year, this colorful celebration along North Broadway in Chinatown has become the premier cultural event in the Southern California Asian-American community. Don't miss the 121st Annual Golden Dragon Parade, happening Saturday, February 1st, beginning at 1:00 p.m. For more information, visit lagoldendragonparade.com. Chocolate is the name of the game at the Savory Chocolate Culinary Fight Club. This event is not about creating sweet cupcakes. This cooking contest boasts food of the gods kind of bites. It's refined but translatable to the chocolate lover who wants to experience chocolate in a new way. Get a front row seat to creative deliciousness. The Savory Chocolate Culinary Fight Club drops Friday, January 31st. For details, visit their listing on Gold Star. If you love art, music, VR, and exploring new things, come experience the magic of Samskara, an immersive art and technology exhibition. This multimedia exhibit is a great sanctuary for getting out of your head and realizing the universe around you. Take your friends and get lost together in one or all four interactive domes. Prepare to see tons of captivating visuals and Instagram-worthy pictures at Samskara, happening February 2nd from 6:00 p.m. to midnight. For details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition, I'm Rasha Goel. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can also catch us online at lacityview.org. And we're on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube, so no excuses to miss us. See you next time for more LA This Week.
I have it on. There you go, thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum now, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Herastasen, Wezar, Corretts, Kokorian, Lee, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of minutes.
Mr. Buscaino moves, and Mr. Bonin seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bloomingfield moves, and Mr. Lee seconds, next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Ms. Rodriguez, would you please so kindly to lead us on our flag salute?
Absolutely, thank you, Madam President. Please put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, is it all right if I go through the agenda now?
Yes, go ahead.
Items 1 through 19 are items noted for a public hearing. There is a request to continue item 1A, 7, and 34 to February 4th, 2020.
Okay, without objection, that would be the order?
There is also a request to continue item 18 to March 20th, 2020.
Without objection, that would be the order as well?
For item number 1B, the department recommends confirming the lien, and there are cards on all items, 1 through 19. Item number 2 is an eminent domain matter that should be held on the desk also.
All right, let's go ahead and move on.
Items 20 through 31 are items which public hearings have been held.
Members, are there any specials on these items, Mr. Bonin? Item 27 for Mr. Bonin, any others? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next.
Items 32 through 43 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, then, without objection, those items are not before us. Are there any cards on any of these items?
Yes, Madam President, there are cards on 32 through 43.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on.
On the supplemental agenda, item 44 is an item scheduled for a closed session, and there is a card on this item.
Okay, let's go ahead and hold that item for now.
Madam President, that brings counsel back to presentations. Item called special or general public comment?
Ms. Rodriguez, are you ready for your presentation?
Good morning, colleagues, thank you, Madam President. I am here joined by some of the most, some of our greatest examples of public servants here in the city of Los Angeles, the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department that so honorably wear the badge in service to our city in recognition for their contributions during National Mentorship Month. If you can please help me give them a round of applause. I'm joined today by a number of YSOs from throughout, our youth service officers from around the city of Los Angeles. Commander Woodard, whose responsibility with the Los Angeles Police Department includes the oversight of our youth programs. But again, these are, these are the men and women who understand the privilege and responsibility that come with wearing that badge every single day. And I am so privileged that in my district, both with the service of the YSOs from Mission and Foothill Division, Foothill Division's YSOs are actually located in my field office at Pacoima City Hall. So I have the special privilege of getting to see their work close up every week with countless youth from our community that show up. I mean, I think we have one of the largest cadet programs, both cadet and junior cadet programs in the city, with waitlists that far exceed our capacity. And I think it just is reflective of the incredible opportunities of their leadership and their service and their mentorship that they provide, that it's hungered amongst members of our community, that they do the work that they do, and they provide that critical mentorship every day. You know, as someone who, obviously everyone knows, the daughter of a firefighter, my dad, as an explorer post leader in the Fire Department, together we founded the LA Fire Academy program. And these programs are instrumental in not just teaching these youth about the importance of the job and the functions that they play every day, and it's about teaching them the ability to strive for more. The understanding that with the right tools and guidance, they can achieve endless potential. And at a time when I know so many of us are struggling right now, given what the horrific events of this weekend, the tragedy that we ensued, I think, you know, these are the heroes that we have in our communities every single day that show our kids that they have the tools and the capacity to achieve greatness. And so I'm grateful for their service, and I want to acknowledge each of these YSO that have joined us here today. From Northeast, we have Rodrigo Garcia and Raquel Trujillo. From Southwest, we have Arturo Gonzalez and Saudiya Hutchins. From 77th, we have Adonis Cook and Jesse Gutierrez. From West LA, we have Lakeisha Thompson and Lucy Rodriguez. From Foothill, we have Claudia De La Cruz and John Madrid. From Mission, we have Marco Mendoza and Melissa Sanchez. From Gateway, we have Alfonso Alfaro and Roderick Sewell. From Randy Simmons Headquarters, Guillermo Fajardo. And V. Guillermo Fajardo. And Van Nuys, we have Lydia. Lydia, you're gonna have to help me with the last name.
Chakaska.
Chakaska. Excuse me. Sorry about that. But when you look at collectively what each of these YSOs do, they service, they provide mentorship to over 1,700 cadets in the city of Los Angeles. And that, again, it's reflective of each of them individually, their contributions collectively make a huge impact in the city of Los Angeles. And we know what a great job our police department leadership does, not just through the cadet program, but through the PALS programs, through all the variety of service opportunities that they provide to help assure that our youth are on the right track. They're an example of why we need to continue to be forward-thinking in how we invest in our youth going forward, and making sure that we are making the greatest investments in our kids, so that we can keep them on a path to achieving their greatest potential. So I would like to cue up a video right now that we've pulled together in recognition of their service.
Julia Alvarez, Southeast Post. Before the cadet program, my life was kind of tough. I lost my mom at a young age, and I was having a difficult time understanding. I was confused. The cadet program has become like another family to me. I learned discipline and morals, values, respect, and I feel like that's helped me a lot. Right now, I'm in the ninth grade, attending high school. In the future, I want to keep attending the cadet program. When I graduate high school, I want to become a neurosurgeon and possibly attend John Hopkins University. After attending the cadet program, I see what they do for us. I appreciate it more. I appreciate how they put their life on the line for us. You know, they're people, and I appreciate it, because not everyone does what they do every day. Like I said, the cadet program for me is like another family to me. I'm pretty sure it'll become one for them. We're always here for each other, so if we're ever feeling some type of way, there is always a cadet sister or brother there for you. We have our YSOs, too. They're always there for us, for support. If we need advice, they give it to us. It's a leadership program as well, so you learn a lot of discipline, respect. You become really close with the people that are there. It becomes a family, another family.
The skills that our youth acquire through participation in cadet programs, or the junior cadet program, they're life skills. They're transferable. They are examples of leadership development, physical discipline, folks that, you know, teaching these youth that their dreams are totally achievable with dedication and hard work and mentorship. And those are the attributes of what each of these YSOs represent. They have given the very best and reflect the very best of what this department is in the city of Los Angeles. I'm honored to work with so many of them, again, in my district, and see the work that they do. I'm even more proud of some of the cadets that have ascended on to become the next generation of members of the Los Angeles Police Department. They've gone on to give in service, not just in that role, but also as members of the military as well. So I'm grateful for the countless contributions they make every day, their commitment to mentorship. And at this time, I'd like to invite the gentleman who has the privilege of providing the oversight of our youth programs, Commander Woodard.
Thank you so much. Thank you. On behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department and the Chief of Police, Michael Moore, I would like to publicly and wholeheartedly thank each youth service officer that is in attendance today. I cannot adequately express how humbled I am to work with such an outstanding group of individuals that understand that they play a critical role in shaping the future leaders of the city of Los Angeles. I had the privilege to observe over 250 cadets graduate two weeks ago at the Galen Center. And when I say that we are in good hands, we are in good hands because of the work that they do. These officers are asked to give up most of their weekends to work with the future leaders of the city, at the expense of spending time with their own family. The dedication it takes to be a youth service officer is certainly not for those that want a cushy job. It is designed for men and women that are passionate about youth development, and certainly it is about building a bridge with communities that we normally would not have. But for the relationships that are built by these dedicated team of officers, we've been able to build that bridge. I close by saying, your work has not gone unnoticed by me, and certainly it has not gone unnoticed by this prestigious city council. And most importantly, it has not gone unnoticed by Chief of Police, Michael Moore. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander.
Ms. Rodriguez, we have two members on the queue whenever you're ready.
Okay, we have one more speaker, and then we'll do that. So, thank you, Madam President. And again, one of the, of all of these incredible people, there was one that was elected to speak and represent them all this morning. And I'm so privileged to have had the opportunity to see his work firsthand, along with his partner, Melissa, over at Mission Division. They not only do the work through the, you know, they're at Mission Division, but they also coach a number of youth to participate in SRLA, which is another incredible youth program that I'm so proud of. But they are, you know, emblematic of the service that each of these YSOs do, and I'm privileged to have seen their work firsthand. And I'd like to invite Marco Mendoza for some of those.
Thank you, Madam President, counsel. I'm honored to be amongst these officers back here, because like Councilwoman said, the kids are our future, and we're truly honored to be their mentors and to be part of their life. Our goal is not for them to be police officers one day, but maybe be in your seats one day, you know, or whatever they wish to be. And the little things that we say and do for them right now, we hope that something sticks in their head, and one day that will make a difference between going to jail or sitting up there where you are now. Thank you.
Mr. Buscaino, followed by Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand and recognize first and foremost our committee chairwoman, Monica Rodriguez. Thank you so much, Ms. Rodriguez, for bringing the heart behind the badge here. You see before you officers that I've just been blessed to serve alongside you and had a front row seat in my years as a senior lead officer to partner with our YSOs, particularly in the Harbor area, then Captain Woodard, as remembers, now Commander Woodard. You know, you are the driving force behind reaching out to our youth. And I'll never forget the times where I was arresting our kids and putting them in the backseat of our car and said, "This is not right." They were flipping me off. They were calling me names. So what we did in partnership with our YSOs, we shared the importance of partnering with our local Boys and Girls Club. Then, today, is Executive Director Mike Lansing, who said yes to, we brought in LAPD to the Boys and Girls Club and with the YSOs, and exposed our Boys and Girls, the law enforcement background, and brought in the specialized units. But I'm also reminded when the late Chief Earl Payenger, who I'll be adjourning in his memory this week, he really, you talk about a program, a nationally known program, this cadet program, that you are all leading, allowing our kids to be exposed to, be mentored by LAPD's finest, and other law enforcement agencies coming to the city because of our YSOs, and learning best practices on building better relationships with our kids. And it's happening every single day. And I appreciate you. We appreciate you. We love you, and we bless you for your commitment, because it's, I mean, you get into the academy, and it's like, "Did I sign up for this?" But you did, because you love and you are compassionate about our kids and making sure that they don't get in behind bars. This is the greatest preventative, crime prevention measures that we can take. And we thank you. We bless you. We honor you. And thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for recognizing the work that they do every single day in our city. God bless you.
Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee?
Councilman Rodriguez, you know I've always been a big supporter of different youth programs in my area, because I'm such a big believer in them. As a 10-year volunteer at our Devonshire PALS program, I've seen firsthand how these officers have changed lives through the cadet program. We can direct correlation, see how their work has helped lower juvenile crime in our district, has helped send these kids to become police officers themselves, that I had the fortune to, you know, bump into every now and then as they're doing their work, but also doing great things of helping them get into schools, and, you know, good schools and good jobs, and just because they've been able to direct them a different way. And so I wanted to, you know, thank them, because I understand, I know the hard work that they do, and I would, you know, you're one of your, one of your officers, Officer Loza happens to be a mom of one of my staff members, so I had to recognize her, recognize her. But thank you for bringing them in today.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
And so again, in recognition of National Mentorship Month, we honor the work of the YSOs in the city of Los Angeles for their service, for teaching our kids and giving them the tools of discipline, of the tenacity that they need to help accomplish their greatest potential. Thank you very much for your work.
Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you very much for your service. Members, we're gonna go ahead and call a few multiple card speakers. Armando Herman, are you here? Doesn't appear to be in the room. Eric Previn? Want to come on up, sir? Mr. Previn, you're speaking on items 1B, 2, 3, 6, 17, and 16 and 17, 42 and 44, and your general public comment.
Thank you. I'd just like to briefly say thank you to Armbruster, Goldsmith, and Delvac, as well as ONI Capital LLC, a Canadian firm that is erecting a 760-footer over on, I believe it's on Broadway, but check me on Hill Street, it's on Hill Street. So this is just a monster. And I think, you know, Krikorian is fond of saying, "Some places want that." They like the vibrancy of all those people. There are gonna be 700 parking spaces also, and Bonin has secured 78 bicycle, temporary bicycle parking spaces as well. So I look forward to that. I think we're all excited. And the Mills Act, Mills Act is where we give a big tax break if you live in a place that's worth holding on to. So here we have Desmond's, which is a lovely old apartment. They're gonna get a very, very nice tax break, and I look forward to that. Now, 17 and 18 are the two items where you've got liquor license. So there can never be a shortage of liquor licenses being handed out. We have two being distributed over at the County Board of Supervisors concurrent to today. One is in David Rue's district at a mobile gas station, so he could stand up and defend that in a debate. I don't know why we would be serving gasoline, I mean, liquor, at a gasoline station in the evening. That makes no sense. That's just an opportunity to bulk up on booze, drive around drunk. So I don't know. I mean, maybe some people do need it, but I don't know who. And then the other one is out at Porter Ranch. So obviously, there's no better time than the present to tank up and roll around the West Valley as well. So thank you for that. Couple of vacations of city property, which reminds me of the vacation in Studio City, just around the corner from the Weddington Golf and Tennis Public Amenity currently, bought by Harvard Westlake. And right around the corner, there's a amorphous eight parcel unit thing on Ventura Boulevard. We are deeply concerned. We asked planning, they're pretending they don't know. We asked Caro Torosian, which is truly disturbing, because I believe he's the CD2 jefe, and he evinced no knowledge, which is worrisome beyond belief. So we're looking forward to some clarity about that, and from Krikorian, and we're gonna get there in a minute. Now, fortunately, Coetz has agreed to put up a banner program in his district. This is gonna be alerting people to the Melrose Business Improvement Association's great work, and to come and spend money in that part of town. Meanwhile, O'Farrell is working closing and fencing and gating and blocking. He's got the, finally, the gate up at Clifford Tunnel is going to be erected. Now, I always wonder, why should it be $1.3 million for a refresh spot? A refresh spot is essentially a place, like a mobile pit stop, all these nice ways to say decency measures. But why would the city of Los Angeles, the great city of Los Angeles, be renting, or leasing, or I don't know what, for $1.3 million for, over at 544 Town, Town spelled with an E at the end? I don't know. When I benchmark $1.3 million, that's how much the Board of Supervisors spent to fix up the podium at the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, your general public comment, Mr. Previn?
Thank you. For the general public comment, I want to be a little precise, and I apologize. But in our neighborhood, Studio City, I mentioned the golf and tennis thing over at Weddington. Well, Paul Krikorian, our leader, wrote a letter to the head of the school, trying to step forward with some measures of sanity. But unfortunately, it hasn't gone far enough. And we want to make it clear that to do a project like that without a traffic study that includes, for example, the mysterious project right around the corner on Ventura Boulevard, is disingenuous. And also, I mean, we have all sorts of questions about why they need to put two giant structures. He said, "Well, it can't be three, so it can be two giant structures." And there's this, everything is worded in a way that you can sort of do what you'd like to do, as long as it's inside of my idea of what's appropriate. But he's perceiving that his idea of what's appropriate is what the rest of the community feels. So for example, where it's good that they're not gonna tear down the little golf amenity, they are. And we don't want that to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thanks. Next speaker is Antonio Ramirez. Ms. Ramirez, are you here? After Ms. Ramirez is Patricia McAllister and Rob Quan. Ms. Ramirez, you're speaking on items 37, 39, 42, and 44. I'm gonna ask you to speak on the items only, and then you have your one minute of general public comment.
And also, please don't remember not to shout into the mic.
Don't shout on the mic, Ms. Ramirez. It's very unpleasant for our translator.
Number 37, Bert Ward, if I remember, is the Robin in Batman and the Cape Crusaders. Yes, I am for Bert Ward as Robin. He should have a star at the Walk, Hollywood Walk of Fame. Fantastic. Those were the good old days, when we were taught right from wrong, and there was public safety all over. No one was in danger. We really were safe, especially if you're living in New York City. It was fantastic. Back then, we had safety. We had people who cared in the political field. They were true public servants, the real meaning of public servants. Number 39, Democrats, you are pathological liars and money-hungry scavengers. First, be honest and forthright with the tourists, visitors, and travelers, and provide public safety, because the Melrose Shopping District, as I remember it, is ugly, filthy, unsafe, and saturated with criminal junkies and thieves. And streets and sidewalks are cracked, broken, and buckling. Be careful, you may take a fall. And number 42, I am for funding partially of the refresh spot in Skid Row, because you do need people out there to wash, bathe, and clean, as you also need it on this side of the, of Skid Row. We got too many goddamn violent niggers out there. You need to be safe and away from, I, again, let me emphasize and caution you, do not go to Skid Row. It is dangerous. Latinos and many other whites and Asians are being beaten on a daily basis. Please be careful. You need to know that. No one here will tell you that. Even the LAPD knows that you don't belong out there. It is unsafe. You are being beaten, attacked, robbed, and just violently mayhemmed. Be careful. Do not go to Skid Row if you are not a nigger or black. Do not go there.
Ms. Ramirez, get back on the items you signed up to speak on.
And number, and I will go now on to public comments.
One minute. Hold on for just a second. One minute, hold on for just a second, let's restart the clock. Go ahead.
We, the legal law-abiding citizen, um, and homeless women and elderly who are not criminal elements, demand life, liberty, freedom, and long overdue justice. It's hard enough being homeless, but we are subjected to daily and nightly gang stalking torture by these fucking vicious and violent and evil Skid Row niggers, male and females, and the chungo Latino criminal wetbacks and gang bangers, males and females, and the white trash junkies, males and females. Moreover, 90% of the stinky, filthy, nasty, vicious homeless males are trannies, bisexuals, and faggots, and they are violently dangerous motherfuckers because they hate women, right along with the lesbians. This homeless group of predatory offenders are your domestic terrorists who terrorize heterosexual men and women and sodomize rape children, not to mention fucking thieves. Vote these fucking Democrats out and recall the corrupted unethical Jew puppet District Attorney Jackie Lacy and recall matzo ball Jew asshole Mike Fewer. There is no public safety, we have an epidemic.
Ms. Ramirez, your time is up. Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, your time is up. Next speaker is Patricia McAllister. Ms. McAllister, you're speaking on items 1B, 3, and 42, and your general public comment.
Okay, um, item number one here, 1B, I wanna talk about these liens because based on my investigation, the Finance Committee set these liens at, uh, for a penalty of 250%. Now, this Finance Committee, people need to know, we have Paul Corrigan, he's a, um, a lawyer, Karen Price is a lawyer, Paul Coetz is a history major, he has a history degree, Bob, Bob Bloomingfield, uh, has a Public Policy Study degree, and Mike Boyne was a news reporter. So these, this is our Finance Committee, okay? I want you to take that fee down to zero. If people have liens, they can't sell the house, okay? And then they end up on the street after you foreclose on them. So we need to do something about that. Also, uh, where's the proof that these facilities are being built? I see in the menu, item 3 here, that, uh, there's a new school at 3900 Stansberry Avenue. Now, just like the HHH funding, nothing was ever built. One just got built recently in, for, in three years. So what I'm seeing in all these agenda items, I'm seeing where you, you, you know, you're spending millions and billions of dollars, but nothing is being built every time I drive by these places. Now, I should be able to go to the Finance Committee and ask them, I say, "Okay, you asked for, uh, 25 million for this school. Show me the receipts. Give me some receipts." They have no receipts, okay? I wanna make sure that the money was spent. This is called theft, as far as I can see. I can't get any information from anybody. The Finance Committee canceled 21 meetings in 2019. They only met twice, and that's against the law. 21 meetings, they canceled. Finances, that's the committee where our money is being spent. They're meeting all right, but behind closed doors. And that is illegal, and I'm gonna deal with it. I have a handout for everybody right here showing all of, Sergeant of Arms, all of the canceled meetings of the, uh, Budget and Finance Committee, and I want each one of you to read it. It comes from your website. I didn't make it. All of these ca, Budget and Finance is the most important committee in this, in this city, and you're not meeting, but you're meeting behind doors and you, and I, and I think you're stealing like you never stole before, and most of you are lawyers, and that's why we've got 600 lawyers and 200, um, count, uh, part-time lawyers. We're gonna deal with this. And Mr. Coetz wants to be the controller, and he has a degree in history. The controller we have right now, Ron Grappin, is a, uh, Galperin, is a lawyer. He has no accounting experience whatsoever. We don't want an election for a controller. A controller is a hired certified public accountant, a CPA, okay? And I have to go to the President, to the White House on this one. You all are a bunch of thieves, we're gonna get you out of office. And Karen Price, yes, you're a lawyer, don't laugh about it, we're gonna get all of you off the Finance Committee.
McAllister, you have your one minute of general public comment.
Now, uh, he's not here right now, Herb Wesson, but I'm gonna try to get some sanctions on him. Uh, as far as the Administrative Code, Section 2.8, Council Committees, "It shall be the duty of each committee to report to the council such information or recommendations concerning the business of such divisions as shall be necessary to enable the council to properly legislate." Madam President, if you allow this to occur under your watch, that this, um, uh, Finance Committee cancels 21 times, meets twice, I'm going to try to get some sanctions on you, and I'm still gonna work on Herb Wesson. He had no right to allow them to do that. He knew what was going on. They even canceled the meeting for this month. I always look for the Finance Committee meetings because I wanna go to the last one I went to, they wanted to spend 300 million on some computers for the city. I told them, I said, "You don't buy computers, you lease." They're gonna throw those away, and then by new, you lease them, they will come in and set it up, they will maintain them, they'll do everything, and then five, six years, they'll bring in some new ones, and you lease. They threw my opinion out the window and, and, and went on and sanctioned that 300 million.
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. Rob Kwan. You're speaking on items 39, 41, 43, and your general public comment.
Uh, good morning. On 39, that relates to street banners, uh, for the patronization of Melrose Shops. Uh, we've always have a lot of banners coming through here, and I just wanna note that, uh, we have an election coming up with 11 days of early vote. Really important information to getting out there to the public. Uh, now that we've handed off elections to the county, I wonder what we're still doing here in the city to ensure that people are aware of voting and expanded early vote. Um, I worked for Obama in '08 in Las Vegas, we had two weeks of early vote, and in 2008 there was an 80% turnout in Nevada. For items 41 and 43, those relate to, uh, rewards for, uh, incidents of unsolved murders and robberies. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge the ongoing Metro scandal engulfing LAPD. People falsely being included in gang databases, and there's been a lot of, uh, talk about the adverse consequences of that, but I'd like to note that, um, when there is an unsolved murder or robbery, what's the first thing LAPD does? They shake down the gang database. They interview people on those databases. They often get engulfed as suspects. They might get lumped in, in a lineup, uh, where they're shown to a witness who really doesn't know what they're looking for and gets guided into selecting someone. Uh, I clerked for Project for the Innocent, and there were two cases where two black men served 50 years for crimes they didn't commit, and that happened because of LAPD I, I really wonder what this council, uh, still does to stay vigilant when it comes to LAPD. I was looking, 30 years ago, Joy Picas was, uh, throwing a fit because she wanted to get rid of the LAPD marching band, uh, to save money. And we look at this council and LAPD's budget, how it's exploded, the drop retirement program that goes unchecked. We talk about Nipsey Hussle, and...
So, sorry, should we go into your general public comment? Or you seem to be off the items, so...
We'll go into my general public comment.
Just give him one minute.
Obviously, I'm, I'm pretty bummed about Kobe Bryant, but we had 20 years of him. Uh, what I'm most sad about was, um, the last few years of his life, if you saw him at a basketball game, it was a women's college or WNBA game. That loss, being able to see his daughter, see the WNBA grow, is the biggest thing we've lost here. I, I'd like to impart upon you all to embrace that fearlessness, um, especially when we look at Sheriff Villanueva. We've seen our Board of Supervisors stand up, and we haven't heard a peep from our council members about this outrageous disregard of rule of law. We haven't seen you speak up sufficiently about the Metro Squad. You know, councils of old would bring their asses out here. They would grill them. We don't even get that lip service. That's all I gotta say about that.
Okay, that concludes, uh, multiple speaker cards. Members, let's go ahead and vote on item 1B. Items 3 through 6, items 8 through 17, item 19, 32, 33, 35 through 43. Item 1B, 3, 3 through 6, 8 through 17, 19, 32 and 33, and 35 through 43. Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Okay, members, let's go ahead and move on to item number 2. This item requests the City Council to adopt an ordinance approving a resolution of necessity to authorize commencement of an eminent domain proceeding to acquire portions of the property located at 5928 West 96th Street, Los Angeles. The portion of this property are identified in the CEO's report, and we will proceed as follows, members. We will first hear an oral presentation from staff. Mr. Mark Adams, who's in the room. After the staff report, members of the council may address questions to Mr. Utterbach. Following questions from the council to staff, the affected property owners and representatives of their, on their behalf, may address this council. If the owners or representatives have any questions for staff, they should be directed to Mr. Utterbach. Any member of this council may then ask staff any follow-up questions as well. Mr. Adams, do you wanna go ahead and start?
I would, thank you. Again, my, my name is Mark Adams, I'm the Government Affairs Director at Los Angeles World Airport, so I'm sitting in for Jeffrey Utterbach, who was, uh, scheduled to be here today. This item is a hearing to determine whether the council wishes to adopt an ordinance approving a resolution of necessity to authorize commencement of eminent domain proceedings to acquire portions of the property located at 5928 West 96th Street in Los Angeles. This ordinance does not address in any way the compensation to be paid for the taking of the property, nor does the adoption of this ordinance prevent the parties from continuing to negotiate. It is always possible that a settlement may be reached without trial or significant litigation over the acquisition, and that is always our hope. But in this case, for the reasons explained in the staff report and the presentation, we are asking that the council approve the ordinance so that staff may move forward with the next legal step in the condemnation process, which is the authorization to bring an eminent domain action to condemn properties, to condemn portions of the property. At the close of the hearing, you'll be asked to make a few key findings as described in the report and the proposed ordinance. Adopting this ordinance requires two, an affirmative two-thirds vote of the council. The council file and the presentations you are about to hear will give you the facts necessary to support the necessary findings. The presentation, council file, and all of its reference documents will become part of the record of these proceedings. If there are any additional exhibits or other information presented to the council this morning, they will be added to the record. If you have any questions about the facts, do not hesitate to ask the staff. If you have legal questions about the finding, please ask legal counsel. The first two findings, the public interest of necessity requiring the project, and the project being planned or located for the greatest public good and the least private injury, are applicable to the entire project and not solely or even necessarily to the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of portions of the specified property at issue here. The remaining findings, for example, that the project being acquired is necessary for the project, that an offer has been made to the owners of the property as required by law, and that requisite environmental reviews have been completed, apply to the specific property at issue. While the staff report details much of what I'm about to discuss, I'd like to touch on a few items. The project requiring acquisition of the property is the Landside Access Modernization Program, or LAMP, in which Lawa will be constructing an automated people mover to provide passenger connections from a consolidated rental car facility and two new intermodal transportation facilities to the Los Angeles International Airport Central Terminal area. Property acquisitions for LAMP are only pursued via eminent domain as a last resort after voluntary acquisition measures have been pursued and proven unsuccessful. Here, a written offer and accompanying appraisal summary was previously made to the property owners, and despite efforts to negotiate, no agreement for acquisition of the needed property rights could be reached. While Lawa and the property owners are discussing an agreement on a, on a procedure to have further discussions, both sides agree that Lawa proceed with eminent domain proceedings at this time. Notice of this hearing was sent by first-class and certified return receipt mail to the property owners on January 13th. That concludes my presentation. I would like to take the opportunity to remind the council members that the adoption of this ordinance requires an affirmative two-thirds vote of the council.
Very well, Mr. Adams. At this time, let's go ahead and open the hearing to any questions of staff from the council. Are there any questions? You see none? Let's go ahead and take comments or questions from the property owners or the representatives regarding this property. Are they here?
I don't believe so.
They're not here? Let's go ahead and take, um, comments from members of the public. If I call your name, please come on up. Mike Greenspan, are you here? All right, public comment has been satisfied on this item. Is there any other questions, any concerns on behalf of the council? See none? Let's go ahead and vote on this item. Mr. Sidya, did you have a question?
Yes. Related, and I could structure the form of the question so it could be more, more related, but it's a question I've gotten from the public, uh, calls this morning, related to, um, the coronavirus. Obviously, uh, Americans will be taken to Ontario, no longer affiliated with us, I know that. How, how is that decision made, uh, to choose Ontario over, let's say, LAX?
If, if we're talking about individual airline flights to, to, whether it be to Ontario or, um, or to LAX, that was, that would be the decision of the airlines. I know that, uh, there are certain airlines, including China Airlines, that fly into Ontario. They have, uh, but that comes from Taipei, um, that flight. I, I'm not sure exactly what, what you're, what you're, what you're asking about relative to Ontario, but, um, they do have a federal inspection facility there and can, um, process the, the incoming international passengers there as well.
So the answer is that there's a federal facility?
Actually, Mr. Sidya, let me just interject. So this is actually kind of disconnected from the eminent domain thing, so I, I think since this is not agendized, we should probably continue with the item and not address this right now.
The public has this incredible interest in this subject matter, and usually they'll just come up and blurt out things of the most tangential nature. Let me, if I may, rephrase my question. The, this effort around LAMP is an effort for us to be more efficient and effective. Part of our efforts around the efficiency and effectiveness for the LAX and for the city of Los Angeles in terms of, uh, receiving customers, uh, patrons throughout the world at our airports was to bifurcate our relationship with the Ontario Airport, and as such, uh, the questions I've received from the public this morning and this weekend were, "How were the decisions made with respect to, to the decision to fly Americans not to LAX but to Ontario?" Uh, and what I heard you say was that there is, one, it's a question of the airlines that fly there normally, and that there is capacity from the federal government to process people. Is that the answer?
Yes, they have processing capacity there in Ontario, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on this eminent domain item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam President, for the record, the ordinance is carried over one week to February sec, uh, February 4th, 2020, unless reconsidered with 12 members present?
That's correct, thank you. Let's move on to item 44, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is, um, Alexandra Lovinsky v. City. The funds were actually approved for this quite a while ago. What's before the council now is simply controller instructions to shift specific amounts of money from various accounts to various, um, law firms or people. So the total dollar amount that's being shifted is $9,527,452.21.
Okay, there's a speaker on this item, Mr. Mike Greenspan. Mr. Greenspan, are you here? Doesn't appear to be in the room, so let's go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Let's go ahead and vote on item 20, I'm sorry. Let's move on to item 27. Mr. Bonin, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, colleagues, I call this item special because it's, it's a incredibly significant in, issue impacting homelessness that I think we all need to be aware of because it, it stays under the radar. We all know that there are certain things that inevitably cause homelessness. We know that, that the lack of affordable housing causes homelessness. We know that- We know that foster care is a pipeline into homelessness. We know that income inequality is a pipeline into homelessness. We know that domestic violence is often a pipeline into homelessness. There are known things about what causes homelessness. There are also known things about what causes homelessness to get worse, and I mean that in several different ways. It makes the numbers of people in Los Angeles that are homeless increase. It makes the cost of addressing homelessness increase, and it makes the experience worse and the trauma worse for the people who are unhoused and living on the streets. And that is the way that we address homelessness primarily, is that our resources are focused almost exclusively to the people who are worst off, who are chronically homeless, who are most at risk of death. It was a very well-intentioned, and still is well-intentioned approach, save lives. But what that means is that almost all of our resources are going to help only 25% of the people who are, who are unhoused. And that means that a lot of people, the majority of people who become homeless when they are first homeless, and they are easier to help, and it is less expensive to help them, are turned away. They are essentially told, you are not homeless enough to get services or qualify for housing. It applies to children, it applies to women, it applies to someone who just fell into homelessness. There's two analogies I make on this to help us understand it. It's a, there's a cancer analogy I make. It's as if you were diagnosed with lung cancer, and the doctors told you, I'm sorry, we only treat stage four, come back when you've metastasized and you're in much graver condition. We know that's going to cost more money to help them. We know their chance of success and survival is much less. The other analogy I'll make, and it's, it's one that, that, that sort of may make a lot of sense around this building, is imagine street resurfacing. Imagine if we said to every constituent that we were only going to repair or treat failed streets in the City of Los Angeles, that we would never slurry seal, that we would never resurface any street until you needed the most expensive intervention. That is what we are doing with homelessness now. We are even at LSA taking resources that are meant for people who can be helped easily, short-term rental subsidies, rapid rehousing vouchers, and giving them to people for whom that is not the successful treatment, and they wind up back out on the streets. And the person that could have been helped with that voucher is not helped. It is an inevitable pipeline that, that creates more homelessness. And what it does is, once you become homeless, at the beginning, fairly easy to help you. A short-term rental subsidy may be what makes the difference, maybe a minimal amount of services. Once you've been on the streets for a year or two, you've become normalized to that experience. You have become repeatedly traumatized. You may be beaten, you may be raped, you may have your belongings taken. You may, if you are not suffering from an illness when you become homeless, you're much more likely to be suffering one when you are living homeless, particularly mental illness. There's a lot of people who, who become drug addicts once they are living on the street. They weren't when they got there. And unless we refocus some of our energy, perhaps with the state money coming in, to, to actually help people at the early stage of homelessness, our chronic homelessness numbers will continue to increase because we are telling people, you don't get helped unless you're chronically homeless. I'm, I'm going to circulate to your offices later today an article I, I published on Medium last week that goes into this more. It's an unspoken thing, and it's a huge problem that we need to address. And the motion I have here today directs LSA to come back with some data to explain to us just how big and bad this problem is so we can begin to fix it so that we can get more people off the streets and save more lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, this voter passes. Let's move on to general public comment. If I call your name, please come on up to the podium. Lydia Ponce. Gilbert, Gilbert Mora. Nicolas Patino. Nicolas. Ingrid Muller. Hi, Lydia, go ahead, you have one minute of general public comment.
Good morning, Lydia Ponce, Mayo Quechua, and Scottish. I can't believe that we're erasing history throughout Los Angeles the way that we do by demoing buildings and not taking into consideration the richness from prayers and tears and sweat from the people who migrated here from other states 100 years ago. With that, that has to be said that there's somehow, some way, the city and the county need to build bridges to work together because we're passing an ordinance in the BOS with regards to illegal massage parlors to try to help end massage parlors that host sex and human trafficking. And ladies and gentlemen, I am asking you to consider that the database that's missing that does not count indigenous women, there's no database that exists with the sheriffs and the police department, so we need to do better, and please, vote no on 21.
Thank you, Gilbert. Good morning, you have your one minute of general public comment.
Madam President, that sounds kind of good. Honorable council members, I'm here to talk about Council File 170117. It's been languishing in the Plum Committee for two years now, and all we're asking is for it to be agendized either here in the council or in the Plum. It's a simple motion, just asking for a feasibility study of an ordinance that we're talking about that is for the public health and public safety. We're not asking for the ordinance, we're not asking you to even think about the ordinance. All we're asking for is a feasibility study that would let us know if it's able to be done. It's a simple motion, and we just ask that you guys consider it quickly before it expires on the 31st.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Nicolas Patino, and I'm also here on behalf of Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. I'm here to urge the City Council to take a stand for the constituents by moving forward the ARIS, which is stuck in, in the Plum Committee. ARIS is a land use tool that can be used to address the over-concentration of alcohol outlets in Los Angeles. Research shows that communities with more alcohol retailers have more alcohol-related problems, including underage drinking, violent crime, car crashes, and emergency room visits. Research also shows that an effective prevention method is to reduce the over-concentration of alcohol outlets. So we're here to demand that the City Council to take action to address this dire problem by moving forward the ARIS motion. We've been here for over three years, and we continue to meet with City Council member offices, and we are yet to see any action from the Plum Committee.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Ingrid. You give me just a second for, let me call a couple of more speakers, okay? Hold on for just a second. Stacy Sokol. Stacy? Stacy's not here. Jasmine Garcia? Maurina Sintron? Maurina, are you here? Richard Robinson? Thank you, Ingrid. You want to go ahead and, one minute of general public comment.
Okay. Good morning, council. I, I hope you pay attention because I'm going to do this, because I feel strongly that the city in general has failed to effectively oversee overdevelopments, gentrification, mansionization, all those things resulting in citywide negative cumulative effects, like according to SEQA. I'm imploring you to vote no on item 21 and to please reread Council File 18-0835 because I'm a member of a group called SaveVenice.me. I'm a 31-year resident in Venice, and
Thank you, ma'am.
the overdevelopment, the mansionization on the First Baptist Church.
Thank you, ma'am.
the historic First Baptist Church.
I don't want to cut you off, but your minute of general public comment has been expired. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Stacy Sokol, still not here? Are you Jasmine?
Yes.
Good morning, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Jasmine Garcia, and I'm a member of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance, known as LA DAPA. I'm here to ask that Council File Number 17-0117, ARIS, be agendized as it is set to expire this Friday. It is currently in the Plum Committee and has been there for almost three years. The Plum Chair and its members have not taken any action on this motion. The community members are disappointed in the lack of action and the disrespect from those elected to represent them and their best interest. Community is being ignored on an issue that affects all communities of color, historically disenfranchised. Council members, we need action. Your communities would benefit from a tool such as ARIS that would limit the amount of alcohol licenses in your council districts. Thank you.
Good morning, Maurina.
Yes. My name is Maurina Sintron, and I'm here representing LA DAPA. We are here to urge the council to agendize ARIS. ARIS is a potential tool that every council district should use to address alcohol-related harms that affect every community, no matter the color or the socioeconomic class. This tool has been described as a no-brainer. It's customizable, it's flexible tool that each district will have the power to use with the input from their community. We need ARIS, we expect ARIS, and we don't know what the holdup is if we're just asking for discussion. Thank you so much. Agendize ARIS.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Just give me just a second, sir, I'm going to call a couple of more-
Honorable president members, COP, Community Outreach Program. The comprehensive solution to the problem of homelessness in Skid Row is at Fifth and Main, the former million-dollar hotel. It's 12 stories, the frontier, and the Roseland Hotel when reconfigured and utilized as Governor Newsom utilized downtown Los Angeles' inner-city hotels when he was the mayor of San Francisco. Renovate that ho, pardon me for preaching, renovate that hotel. Fifth and Main, the former million-dollar hotel, utilizing it as a community awareness treatment service that, similar to Governor Newsom's, care not cash. Thank you.
If I call your name, please come on up. Jeffrey Delshad. Jeffrey. Elba Aguilar. Harry Manishari. Henry. Are you here? And Myra Jimenez? Did I already call you Myra? Sir Myra Jimenez? Yeah, come on up. And Margaret Malloy. Go ahead, Jeffrey.
Good morning. Regarding the homelessness issues, crisis, whatever people might call it, I just had some thoughts on that. I was just thinking, in a kind of a common sense vein, you know, people say, you know, you crawl before you walk, you walk before you run, so it seems like you're, the approach I perceive is that there's all this money going towards like a, a perfect solution as far as housing units for everyone and stuff, but the reality is, is that a lot of people are in tents, a lot of people don't have anywhere to go, and from me walking around on the streets, it just seems like a, a public hygiene is, is the first issue that is crawling. I think you should send out teams to just give porta-potties and showers and just focus on that type of basic hygiene, which I don't see anyone really paying attention to, and then perhaps down the road, all of you lovely angels could figure out housing situations too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Elba Aguilar. I'm speaking as member of Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Police Alliance. I'm here to ask the City Council to move the ARIS motion, fiber number 170117, out of the Plum Committee. ARIS song can potentially protect sensitive use areas like schools, recovery centers, youth centers, and churches. It can prevent an increase in alcohol density and reduce the high crime and high violence areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Madam President and council members. My name is Myra Jimenez. I am the Advocacy Manager at Alcohol Justice. I speak today regarding ARIS, Council File 170117, to express our ongoing concern for the disrespect towards the mothers that continue to come together and express concerns around the issue of alcohol density in their districts. Many mothers here understand the intersection of alcohol density and quality, quality of life for all communities of color. They may not all be able to speak on their stories today and the violence that they live in their communities that drive this advocacy, but the community needs a report back. The community needs alcohol density to be addressed with them at the table. What will it take? Who will be the champion to help us carry this issue forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Manishari, are you here? There's no one here by that name. Margaret Malloy?
Speaking.
Go ahead.
Councilman Bonin, how long have you been in Venice? What is your legacy regarding the Black community? What have you done? What will you do? I'm asking everybody. I'm asking you, Mr. Sadiya, I wrote to you directly, I'm asking you, Mr. Price, I'm asking you all to deny the vote to grant a SEQA exemption for First Baptist Church of Venice, the most important historical Black property in Venice. Granted on a single page, really? Would your family history be granted? Denial on a single page? SEQA exemption, 15, SEQA guideline, 15300-2 are exceptions. You cannot grant a SEQA exemption for sensitive properties, cumulative impact, significant effect, and historical resources are considered sensitive issues.
Thank you, Margaret, your time is up. Thanks. Next speaker. If I call your name, please come on up. Naomi Nightingale. You want to come on up? Miguel Bravo. Sir Miguel Bravo, come on up. Matt Fisher. Audrey George. Audrey. Mike Greenspan. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, council. I'm speaking on item number 21, First Baptist Church of Venice, like Mrs. Malloy had mentioned, and I'm just very disappointed and hurt over Plum's decision, asking you to rescind that and not approve that decision. How a seven-lot Thai property, single-family dwelling, cannot require an EIFD and with so many blatant coastal-like violations, not go through any type of substantial scrutiny is, it's really, it's really ridiculous how that happens, and, you know, Mr. Bonin, too, your statement, that's, we don't expect you to agree on this with everything, but we expect you to be honest and have integrity, and you haven't shown that to us, you haven't talked to us, and your statement was very hurtful with all the, the lies and misinformation you put out. If you want to build relationships and build, have confidence, your constituents have confidence in you, you need to speak to the leaders in the community, and you're not doing that, sir. Thank you.
Next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. Naomi Nightingale. I am here to implore you to vote for the support to deny the recommendation, to deny our appeal for the SEQA on item 21. It's the desecration of the First Baptist Church that's looked at as the adaptive reuse of the church, which calls for the exterior to remain the same but the interior to be a personal residence. This issue of gentrification and the eradication of Black history in the Venice community is not just within the boundaries of the Venice community. I submit to you that this is happening all across the county, the state, and the nation, and the same dismissal and throwaway communities that are being, like Oakwood Community in Venice, is also happening in your communities. I impor, implore you to vote to sustain the Venice community, the Black history there, its culture, and its people, and not allow our community to be a throwaway community for the benefit of, of developers and other money-pocketed individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Audrey George with LA CAN. Over many, many years, we've demanded, we've implored, we've asked that you please hear the cries to keep LAPA- the cries to keep LAPD out of any, as first responders, when there's mental health issues involved. Your blood, your hand- the blood is on your hands, I'm sorry, for the death of Victor Valencia a few weeks ago. The cops were all amped up by a false scanner report, I mean, the dispatch, I guess, said it was an armed black man, neither of which was true. He would- Victor was known to have mental health issues. The sergeant that responded shot him several times within several seconds of encountering him, and he was unarmed. And if you don't hear this and realize you have to stop sending LAPD on calls as first responders for mental health situations, then it continues to be on your hands.
Thank you, Audrey. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Matt Fisher. I'm a member of the Venice Neighborhood Council, but I'm representing myself today. I wanna talk about item number twenty-one, the First Baptist Church of Venice. We had around thirty-three thousand people sign a petition saying they wanted to keep this property within the community. It's been ignored to the day. There's only been two people who've been focused on, that's the Pinsky's, it's because they're billionaires, probably campaign donors. I'd like to ask some of you to either table this and either look into it, or at least for Mike Bonin to man up and side with the community for once in your career and vote no.
Okay, next speaker, Roger Wolfson. Roger, are you here? Roger Wolfson's not here. Noran Shinaway? Noran Shinaway? Dan? Followed by Armando Herman and Wayne Spiller.
Councilmembers, Daniel Gus, I have a column in City Watch today. You're going to get sued again because the LAPD is withholding computer-assisted dispatch records from me regarding a very small period of time regarding an alleged incident or two at six oh five South Irving. The reason why the LAPD is withholding these computer-assisted dispatch reports is because there's probably not a police incident matter to accompany the record of a police response in response to a nine-one-one call. If those aren't turned over to me by the end of this week, you're gonna get sued, and you're gonna get sued for a hell of a lot more than small claims, and you're gonna pay my attorney's fees for it. You know, you've hidden the domestic violence alleged against the city commissioner Roger Wolfson by his then-pregnant wife. Don't withhold these records, or we will see you in court. Thank you.
Armando Herman, followed by Wayne Spiller.
So you see, I attended a meeting last night called Budget, two PM, and they denied to take my public comment for the record, as in my hand. This will be on the record. It will reflect the Holocaust you fucking niggas bring to this entire city and this fucking state by denying people a right to live in their homes. You don't care. For that reason, Trump, Ben Carson are here to fix your problems. Gavin Newsom, you fucking pussy, and the cunt Nancy Pelosi and your fucking fake impeachment. Get the fuck out of politics if you're not gonna make a change. And as far as the pussies from the city all east, you will take this for public record, you jackass, piece of shit, motherfuckers.
Next speaker, Wayne Spiller.
So, how's life after my botched settlement, huh? Now it's gonna get fucking better. Look at you guys. A black man just dies. You can't save a black church in his honor? Fucking Mike Bonin, fucking Busciano with your fake fucking Laker jersey. You can't do that in honor of Kobe Bryant? You can't save that project in twenty-one, the only black church in the whole fucking place? You gotta erase the memory of black people on the day that we know Kobe Bryant fucking lost his life, Mike Bonin with a black kid keeps saying, "No, I'm not the racist." No, you are the racist. What you done in Venice? I went to all those hearings. I didn't think there'd be a problem even with that, but you're so corrupt, you're so greedy, you think that everybody's stupid. So Kobe Bryant says, "Fuck you, city council."
Next speaker. Said someone here signed up under People of California? Do you wanna come on up? You're the last speaker under general public comment. General public comment is now closed after you speak. Go ahead.
I too would like to rise today to address Councilman Bonin on item twenty-one. He's been pretending like he's trying to save black history by turning a historic black church, a hundred-year-old church, into a millionaire's mega mansion. This council speaks highly of the desire to end mansionization, yet when there's money on the table, they're there to collect. I hope the FBI is looking at this council. I know Weezer and some of you have had your files rifled through. I'd love to know exactly what the relationship is between this council that votes to destroy black history and the lobbyists who pay for it, because the Venice sign-off on this project was fraudulent. It said that this is three lots, not seven. Three is the maximum for any development in this area, and yet you guys are gonna turn an eleven-thousand-square-foot building into one mansion. Talk about homelessness, talk about housing crisis, you could turn this into something for the community. This was social infrastructure that's been stolen by a fraudulent pastor-
Thank you, ma'am.
-and community lending, what do you call it?
Sir, your time is up, thank you.
Predatory lending.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you very much. Members, we have twelve members present, so we're gonna go ahead and reconsider item two. Which before is Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? See none? If we can all rise for adjourning motions, including our members of the public.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, the world is mourning the tragic death of Lakers star Kobe Bryant, along with his daughter and seven others. Like you, I remember celebrating Kobe here at City Hall, almost as if it were yesterday. Chambers was electrified with the energy that Kobe, his wife, and daughters brought that day almost three years ago. Fans came from far and wide to pay tribute to this Renaissance man. He was not only a basketball superstar, but he was a philanthropist, an entrepreneur, an entertainer, a mentor, but most importantly, he was a dedicated family man. Kobe was the world, whether man, woman, boy, girl, young or old, his reach stretched across the continents. His influence transcends barriers. He belonged to every one of us, no matter the skin tone, the language spoken, or where you lived. Kobe Bryant became a household name.
For just a second, Mr. Price, can we please escort Mr. Armando Herman for interrupting our meeting? Mr. Herman? Mr. Armando Herman, you continue to disrupt this meeting. Make your way out, sergeants.
You've been ordered removed. Leave, Mr. Herman.
He continues to disrupt this meeting.
Mr. Price, do you mind starting again, please, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. As we know, Kobe had an unparalleled intellect. He was a child prodigy. He spoke three languages, including English and Italian. He was a poet and a producer, and his love of the arts led him to ultimately winning an Oscar. Dear Kobe, with every winning shot, you made us feel alive. When you played through the sweat and the hurt, we felt your pain. He gave us his hustle and his heart, and we gave him ours. In closing, I'd like to end with a few words from his Academy Award-winning Dear Basketball poem, and I quote, "You gave a six-year-old boy his Laker dream, and I will always love you for it. But I can't love you obsessively for much longer. The season is all I have left to give. My heart can take the pounding, my mind can handle the grind, but my body knows it's time to say goodbye." End quote. But we in LA are not ready, not so ready to say goodbye, which is why my office, alongside that of council president Nury Martinez and other council members, are going to be having a celebration for the king of LA during our Black History Month celebrations in February. Long live the black mamba.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Price. This Sunday, I had the opportunity to go to church with my family in the city of Monrovia. And the place was packed, and we're sitting in the balcony. And around the same time, you could see the people that were attending church begin to kinda flitter around and grab their cellphones and hug each other. There were individuals that were crying. I remember my son, Justin, grabbing my shoulder just to keep me calm. Everybody in this packed church knew that we had just lost a person that was very special to each and every one of us. Everybody, except for the guest pastor. I don't know what he was thinking when he was looking out into the crowd. I don't know if it was some prophetic moment or whatever, but his sermon seemed to be about Kobe Bryant. Was about overcoming mediocrity. It was about not settling. It was about being the best that you could be. It was about just because you were good doesn't mean you can't try to be great. He indicated that God gives us everything, but yet so many of us just give Him average. I wanted just quickly a quote from Kobe Bryant. "We can always kind of be average and do what's normal. I'm not in this to do what's normal." I believe, my faith teaches me, that there is greatness, that we were given greatness each and every one of us, and that we should not settle, that we should always be striving to be better and to do more. Five-time champion of the NBA, two-time MVP, played eighteen years for one- twenty years for one team, eighteen years to the All-Star, won an Oscar. He was always trying to do more. The pastor said that you don't wanna be on your deathbed and look into the faces of the angels and say, "With this gift that God gave me, I played it safe." We can safely say that at that moment of transition for Kobe Bryant, that he said he did everything that he could. And if we are going to make this city the great city that it should be, then we should be determined to do more. Kobe Bryant also said that haters are a good thing, a good problem to have. We all have haters. Kobe said, "People don't hate the good ones, they hate the great ones." So I dare each and every one of us to be as great as we can be. You wanna celebrate the life of an individual that was the heart and soul of this city for twenty years? Then let us be the best that we can be. Let us not settle. Let us do more. Let us remember that great day almost three years ago when Mr. Weezer brought the Bryant family and how excited each and every one of us were. Let us remember that these two young girls, girls of privilege, girls that maybe could have just been kinda obnoxious little brats because they had everything, were the sweetest, most mannerable kids, Mr. Weezer, that we had ever met. And let us also hope at that moment, at that last second, that Kobe was able to touch Gigi. We don't need to worry about the two of them and the other seven people, unfortunately, that were in that crash. We need to be concerned about us, and we need to pick up the torch, and we need to be great. And when our time comes and when we're laying on our deathbeds, we don't wanna look at the angels and said, and say, "We played it safe." Let us come up with an appropriate way to honor a man who gave this city so much. We would ask him to perform miracles, and somehow he did. And we've met this man, steely eyes, ice water in his veins. That was on the court. Off the court, he was a good human being. And I wrap it up with saying this. Life is challenging, and sometimes it ain't easy, and sometimes it's hard, and we all know that Kobe Bryant went through dark times. But what he did show us is that when your back is against the wall, that God will find a way to get you through, because He is a waymaker. God bless Kobe Bryant and the other people that perished in this tragic crash.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Busciano?
Nicely said, Mr. Wesson. That dreaded Sunday morning, just past this Sunday, we'll all remember where we were when we heard the news. My thirteen-year-old daughter, who was a fan, ran into the living room and shared with me, she was on Instagram, that Kobe Bryant was killed in a helicopter crash. I go, gee, that's just fake news, don't believe it. You just cannot believe it. I wish that were the case. Is this real? The city of Los Angeles lost an angel in our city of angels. Colleagues, I had an opportunity, and Mr. Wesson so eloquently shared his great success on the court. I had an opportunity to meet with Kobe a few times off the court. He gave me this jersey- He gave me this jersey after the 2020 championship parade. I was working for the chief's office, I was assigned to his bus. We were at a time where we needed to diversify the police department to ensure that reflected the men in the city, and it was a joint LAPD campaign. And there I was, on Figueroa, thousands upon thousands of fans tossing mini basketballs with Kobe Bryant, and these basketballs read, "Join the LAPD." We spoke Italian along Figueroa, I'll never forget. We said, "Guarda qué bello, es increíble." It's incredible, of all the people that were there supporting the Lakers, the fans, it's a beautiful sight. And we quickly shared his experience in Italy. I was then given this jersey, as you can tell, it's real, this jersey goes down to my knees, through the Lakers organization by thanking me to be a part of that celebration with Kobe. He was a man who gave to everyone. He loved our young people and wanted to make sure that girls had an opportunity to play on the court. He attended, personally attended Wilmington Boys and Girls Club. He didn't have to do that. The young girls were just amazed to see this giant of a basketball legend in their own community. The Mamba League was launched. He then, years before, wanted to make sure that we solved homelessness in our city. And there I was with him at Step Up on Vine, a homeless shelter for thirty-two homeless individuals. He and Vanessa were there to support it. And then we shared, this was in 2014, I believe, of the issues of homelessness. Fast forward to where we're at today, it's no longer an issue, it's a crisis. But Kobe and Vanessa were there to ensure that we solve the homeless problem back in 2014 by lending their support and love and compassion to Step Up on Vine. Colleagues, we must celebrate the fact that a man who had everything and could do anything focused on his teenage daughter. So, Mr. Price, I'm looking forward to celebrating his life in the month of February. I also support and advocate for an enormous public celebration of a magnificent life, one that will be a part of Los Angeles' history forever. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Buscagno. Mr. Lee?
So I think that we're all shocked, and, you know, last night I had the opportunity to speak to a bunch of young kids, age seven to twelve, who actually played in that league. And they were at that, they were there playing in the game right before the game that Gianna was supposed to play in. But more so, they had an opportunity to meet Kobe a few days before. And as you can imagine, you know, someone of Kobe's stature and, even though they probably have never seen him play, but they all knew who he was, and of course, all of a sudden, you know, in our community Kobe was now their friend. And to speak to them yesterday and to watch them deal with this and see how, how he can touch people's lives, whether it was on the court, whether it was his giving back to his community, all the work he did to promote girls and women's basketball that we so admire. It's still hard to believe. I saw it in the faces of my staff when we found out the news, and it's something that is going to take us all, obviously, a long time to even accept. We all have personal memories, times where he performed those miracles and brought us back from the brink of defeat, or hearing about his work out in the community. I have my special Kobe moment. Nineteen years ago, I met someone and asked her to, out on a date, and it was a Laker game, and she hated basketball. But I convinced her that she would enjoy it. Of course, she went, and then Kobe, of course, dropped forty-four that night, and she saw the amazing feats that he did. That woman later became my wife, and she has been a Laker fan ever since. We still have those two tickets, and it's something that is, even though we don't personally know the man, somehow, he seems to have touched all of our lives, and so many of our lives. And I just thank you, Councilman Price, for your words, and Wesson, and Councilman Buscagno, because it's going to take us a long time to heal after this. Sometimes people seem superhuman, and, you know, hopefully, we can show, I show the sentiment that hopefully, we can live our lives like him, giving it our all, giving back to our community, and leaving, leaving a legacy in the hearts and minds of other people through the actions that we do, you know, right here in this council. And hopefully, we can all do a little bit of that.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. I know we're all in shock. I still feel as much in shock as when I first heard it. I was driving to a speech I was supposed to give in the hills, and I was about to turn on the street to enter the area, and my daughter called me to tell me that Kobe Bryant and his daughter had been killed. And I missed the street, and I couldn't seem to read my navigational system, and I spent almost half an hour driving around the hills, lost. And I think we all still feel a little bit lost to lose someone so important to all of us individually and as a city. As a basketball fan, I remember when Kobe Bryant first came to Los Angeles, and there were a few people that were saying, "This guy has so much talent, he's going to be mentioned in the same breath as Michael Jordan." And almost every pundit and anyone that knew anything about sports said, "You're nuts. He's got a lot of talent, but there's so many people that have had talent, this is never going to happen." And he was different. He had the drive, and he had the intensity, and he had the competitiveness, and he did the hard work like nobody else. People that served with him as teammates talked about coming to a workout facility and going very, very early at 6:00 a.m. and thinking they would be the first ones there, and Kobe would be coming out after already having had a two-hour workout starting at four in the morning. That was, I think, how he willed himself to be the great player that he was. And I know many of you that are fans watched or attended his last game, and I remember thinking, as he started to score a few points, I mean, he wasn't the player that he used to be. Particularly, his terrible injury a few years before had really taken a lot of the athleticism out of him. And I thought, oh, my God, he might be able to score twenty points and go out on a high note. And it was unbelievable. And he scored twenty points and twenty-five points, and the miracle at the end is he scored sixty points, something that very few players could ever achieve. Nobody, twenty years past their prime, as he did. It was, it was the Kobe that we all came to know, and we all grew up with him. We grew up with him with his greatness, we grew up with him with his flaws, we saw him mature, and that was his first act. We saw only a little bit of his second act, his bonding with his daughter over basketball, his mentoring of kids, and especially of young women in the basketball arena, his good things that he was doing. We saw a softer side of Kobe. And if anything, the greatest loss is we don't get to see his whole second act as a city and as a world. I know we're all devastated, and I only can say prayers for his family, and may he rest in a well-deserved peace.
Ms. Rodriguez?
It's really impossible to put into words. I think everyone is still trying to reconcile this senseless reality that we're all living in, and I know how heavy I felt from the moment I heard. And, you know, it was his relentless pursuit of excellence. He did not rely on his gifts alone. He continued to do everything possible to push what was possible, and we got to witness it every day, that he played. We got to see it in his example with his family. And I think, Mr. Corretts, as you mentioned, his second act in dedicating himself to advancing opportunities for kids with particular respect to women. And I think when I looked, you know, what was, I think, most tragic for me and most connected in some way is how much he loved being a father to daughters, and how it was helping his daughters achieve their greatest potential, that he was most at home with who he was. And seeing footage of he and Gianna, just, I mean, I don't think there's anybody, any parent, that can't relate to that. My heart was broken, not just for the members of our communities that are suffering in this tragic loss with one another, but his, I can't imagine his family and what they're enduring with the loss of both their father for these young girls and their sister, all at once. It's just an unfathomable tragedy that his legacy, I hope, will be, is, I think, to Mr. Wesson, your point. It's a reminder of that we can't just rely on our God-given gifts alone, that we must continue to pursue excellence in everything that we do. And that I hope his long-lasting legacy is one where we will see more individuals supporting one another to achieve their greatness as he did. He didn't own it alone, he shared it. And that was, I think, his greatest gift to Los Angeles and to the world, and we will never forget that. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Madam President. And certainly, the city of Los Angeles mourns for the Bryant family, Vanessa. We send them a big hug, big kiss, and let them know that the city and certainly the whole world is with them at this horrific time. You know, when we named the August 24th, the Kobe Bryant Day, three years ago, the idea for that actually came up a few months way before that, like six months. We wanted to thank Kobe for not only being one of the best athletes for twenty years, but also to thank him for his incredible work he's been doing for the city of Los Angeles with Home for, Walk for Homelessness and other things. But we waited for about six months, because we wanted to select August 24th, August number eight for the month of the year, and number twenty-four for his two jerseys. And while we wanted to thank him, it was just an incredible gift that he gave us that day, and not only for those who were here, but also as people watched it on their television sets and throughout the city. And we've had a lot of people come through these chambers and to this building, but I've never seen so much excitement as we did that day, that knowing that Kobe Bryant was in the building. And, Mr. Wesson, I remember you made a beeline to my office. You're usually very friendly to everyone when you walk in my office, but that day you just made a beeline to Kobe, and I've never seen you so excited. But, you know, that day as well, it showed us who he was, and his handlers had a very difficult time with him. He stopped and talked to everyone, people wanted to talk to him. I remember the time he spent with my son, his handlers were pulling him, saying, hey, we got to go, but he was just looking at my son, talking to him for a very long time. And then as we finished our ceremonies here, we wanted, we were going to go over to the south, to the Spring Street steps for a little ceremony. His handlers told me, "We're going to stop by the south side of the building for those people who were watching the ceremonies on the TV monitors." He only could say hello, and then we're going to pull him out. And, you know, Kobe spoke for a while there. He saw the love he was feeling from the fans, he didn't care, he kept talking and talking, even longer than I thought he would. But that's the type of person he was. The city loved him, and he loved us back. And, you know, there's few people who could walk into any neighborhood in the city of Los Angeles and be welcomed. Whether he kneed or not, he unified the city. Everyone loved him, and that was what was great about him. You know, for me, as a Latino, I was particularly happy to see how much of a connection we had with him. You know, in a Latino city, we are often overlooked, and he certainly embraced the Latino community. One of his last interviews he made when he finished his career, he actually made it in Spanish, and he said, "My Latino fans are very important to me because they were the first ones who embraced me the most when I first got here." That means a lot to us. Descansen paz, el rey de Los Angeles, Kobe Bryant.
Anyone else, members?
Mr. Weezer? I remember when you brought Kobe to council on August 24th of 2016, and I also remember that I did not meet an athlete, I met a father and a husband. I will never forget when he came in through the chambers and how concerned he was with Vanessa. She was very pregnant with her third daughter, and he kept making sure she was comfortable, making sure she was off her feet, because she was due pretty soon. And what I got to meet that day was an incredible, loving, and supporting father. He also knew that I was the only woman on the council. So he made it a point to speak to me and introduce me to his two daughters. And we spent some time talking, and he said to me, "I want to make sure my daughters see women in leadership." And I got to meet a father. So those are the memories that I have of my first time ever meeting Kobe. Ms. Rodriguez, you and I have incredible dads. I cannot imagine what these girls are feeling now. I cannot imagine for Vanessa, who lost her husband and her baby. Those are the things that I remember on Sunday. But I also want us to remember the families who lost their mothers and their fathers. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, first and foremost, want to send our heartfelt condolences to Vanessa and the Bryant family, and also our sincere condolences to the families of John, Carrie, and Elisa Antobelli, Sarah and Peyton Chester, Christina Mauser, and Aura Zabayan, who also died on Sunday due to this tragic accident. I want to ask all of us to, if we can all please have a moment of silence on behalf of all the families who lost their loved ones this past Sunday. Thank you, and let's pray that these victims are able to find comfort and peace. May they all rest in peace. May they all rest in peace. Our meeting is adjourned.